Mr. Mayor, I believe this you and I, we could adjourn this and be done quickly.
Oh, Susan just came on.
Okay, then we have to have a public comment, but still, I think we can do this. We've got three minutes.
I think, I think Ms. Quarter would be so disappointed.
Hi, Mark. Hi, John.
I saw that in her eyes. It was, it was very, very unhappy look, yes.
Hi Laura, hi Ben.
Hi Laura, hi Ben.
Hello, hello.
John.
Nice to see you.
And there you are, hello.
Mark, hi Susan, hi Laura.
Hello.
Looks like the gang's all here.
I'm not at City Hall, I gotta get to the right place.
Oh, yeah. We need you watching City Hall, Ben, come on.
It looks like we have a new upgrade to Zoom. If you raise your hand to wave hi, it just notified me. It looks like I want to raise my hand. It's gonna put it up for me like John's just, yeah.
Oh, mine didn't.
Let's see. All I know is I got a notice.
Well, you're special.
I just look funny because I'm waving here and it's not doing anything.
City Hall doing okay there?
Looking good.
Good. I like the way you look back at it.
I'd come out and join you, Ben, but it's too far of a walk for me. Steps and down the hallway.
Yep, yep.
Somebody has to hold up that flagpole.
How do you deal with all that traffic noise?
I got these big headphones on.
Now we know why he wears the headphones.
Well, it looks like we've got six o'clock and everybody's here, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Development Agency for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Can we have a roll call, Ms. Burgess?
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Present, thank you very much. And now, if you would join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'd like to offer up just a moment of silence before we start our meeting, kind of collect our thoughts and put positive thoughts out there for those elections that are out there today and that the citizens' best decisions come about. Thank you all, and now I would be looking for a approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of August 24th.
I can not be happy to second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much. Now we move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services and variety of recreation programs for all ages and the maintenance of our parks, streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatacity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the mobile app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code to 94931-2888777. And we just had this conversation with the Chamber of Commerce that you can filter out the information you would like to get from Nixle, so you don't have to get everything. And like always, love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatacity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. Now we'll look at the approval of the final agenda items. Any changes to that, Mr. Obed?
No changes to the items, but I would recommend just a reordering of the items on the regular calendar. So, you're in the League of California City. First, and the unfunded liability policy second. To try to catch the, one of the consultants we have working on the project is gonna be arriving a little bit late, so give them a little more time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, if there are no items needed to be pulled on a consent calendar, I would be interested in a motion. Oh. My apologies, I was trying to rush through, wasn't I? At this point, I'll open it up for citizens' business if we have anybody there that's interested in communicating. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
This is Councilmember Ford, I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much. And now we'll move on to direction on future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Westman?
Let's make sure we're muted. Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask if we could schedule discussing potentially instituting a condition based on environmental concerns that all new developments would use 100% renewable power, subject, of course, to availability within the community. I could flush this out, but since it's not an agenda item, I was just going to leave it at that. Basically, there's precedent for things like this, as we see with solar. And I believe, from what I've heard from staff, we're going to be looking at some things like this from the planning perspective. So it may be a time to put that into what we're talking about, too. The city manager could probably speak to that with more knowledge than I. But I would like to see us add that to the discussion. I think there might be some value for us in it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. There was some brief discussion with that regarding that type of subject with our city manager, so I think that is gonna be coming up down the road. Looking at something along those lines.
We do, yeah, Mayor, we do have an upcoming item. I think particularly around the natural gas prohibition on new development and related solar. It would, I think, be a, it could be included in that conversation if the council was interested.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands. Of course, they're not on my participants list, and they're now on me. Face screen of the individuals. Okay, so now we'll move on to regular agenda items. And we're gonna go with 10B, direction of the voting delegate for the 2021 Annual League of California Cities Ritual Business Meeting. Mr. Obed, will you be opening up this, or shall I?
I can give it a start and then obviously feel free to add. So, this item is related, of course, to the League's annual meeting coming up here on September 24th. Well, the general assembly meeting's on Friday, September 24th in Sacramento. And I think everyone will recall that in a prior City Council meeting, the council delegated Mayor Moore and Councilmember Harvey as primary and alternates, voting delegates for that, for that league meeting, so they're planning to attend. In the, so for the general assembly meeting on the 24th, they are gonna be considering two resolutions and a potential change to the bylaws. And just real briefly, the first resolution is about the allocation of sales tax, specifically Bradley Burns Sales Tax. So, for example, in Kattati, we, with regards to sales tax, we get the 1% Bradley Burns and we also have a separate 1% Measure S tax. The, the 1% Bradley Burns is what this is the subject of. The other local tax, Measure S, is not affected by this because it's, it's calculated differently. Essentially, one's a, one's a point of sale and one's a point of use tax. Measure S is point of use, Measure Bradley Burns is point of sale. And so, we had some large internet retailers, AKA Amazon, that restructured their business and the results of that new business structure basically reallocated the taxes to the points of distribution within the state. So, in other words, if you have an Amazon distribution fulfillment center in your city, you get all the tax. And it doesn't matter, you know, where it's being delivered from the state. They don't, you know, that's, that was the recent restructuring change that I think triggered this resolution for the, for the League to consider. How it had previously been done is the, the taxes were collected on a county, on a county-by-county basis. So, any, for example, in Sonoma County, we don't have any Amazon fulfillment centers in Sonoma County. So, any Amazon shipments that came into Sonoma County, all that sales tax was pooled up and put into the county pool and then distributed to all the cities within the county on a proportionate basis. It's a proportionate based on your, your share of retail sales tax. So that's how it had previously been done. The change will pull that back and then allocate all 100% of the tax to the distribution center locations. So, this red, this first resolution calls for a more equitable tax structure, given that new reality. The other resolution relates to funding for CPUC, who is the regulatory oversight body for, the state regulatory oversight body for railways in the state of California. And this one was put forward by the city of Southgate to basically ask for the state to provide the CPUC more, more funding, more resources to deal with dumping graffiti encampments and other related safety issues that, that can occur along right of ways. And I know, I know, just speaking of, even though we haven't any issues here locally to speak of, I know Santa Rosa has had a lot of examples, a lot of issues with, you know, garbage graffiti encampments, whatever, in the right of way, because it's sort of like a, you know, it's not really, they can't really enforce on, on the right of way because it's a different sort of regulatory scheme. And so, they rely on the railroad operators or the regulatory agencies to do that for them. So, anyway, that's, that's what that second resolution's about. And then lastly, the proposed bylaw amendments are, are about changing some of the composition of the board for the League of California Cities. And the primary change is basically transitioning members. So right now, on the board, some people that are members or directors of the National League of Cities can sit on the California Cities Board. And they're looking to transition, looking to change, looking to transition those seats off of the CalCities Board and just make one non-voting advisory seat for that group, which I believe would free up about five seats. And then adding a member from each one of the five diversity caucuses onto the board. And those, in case anyone's curious, those diversity caucuses are directors from the African-American Caucus, Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, LGBTQ Caucus, Latino Caucus, and Women's Caucus. Those are the five that would be added to the board if the bylaws were changed. And then, also, just using the CalCities moniker as the other, I guess, somewhat substantive change. Otherwise, it's a lot of just, I think, administrative kind of cleanup of the bylaws and that sort of thing. This, the changes to the bylaws do require a two-thirds vote of the general assembly members. Or two-thirds votes of the people present voting, I should say. It's not the full membership, but it relates to people, I think, two-thirds of that group. So, that is, in a nutshell, the actions before the, our voting delegates, the general membership meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I think the pack was relatively clear. I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and through, take each one, each one of these one at a time. And we can start with the Bradley Burns issue regarding the California Cities or CalCities, as we're gonna go by now. We were the recipient of some of those whole taxes through the county last year. That was kind of a nice little surprise. So if, if that were to be eliminated and it just went to the distribution city, it would be kind of a detriment to us and to many other cities as well, as evidenced by the letters of support that came in from the other cities. So, at this point, I'll open it up for any councilmember comment on there.
If I might, through the mayor?
Certainly.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that. It's pretty logical. It's clearly online purchases are going to be a significant part of the future and making sure that that is spread fairly is gonna be important for municipal health everywhere. I like also, though, there's recognition in this of the impact on some of these smaller communities that post these distribution centers and a willingness to discuss what is the appropriate extra that they should receive for taking on a lot of noise, pollution, traffic, and what most of us would feel would be negative impacts. So I think the balance of this overall, I didn't see anything that jumped out and I'd be very comfortable support, asking, giving the mayor permission to support this at the convention.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor? Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, thanks for that, Vice Mayor Lemon. And I think in addition to that, it became pretty apparent early on on some of these distribution centers that where they were located was affecting other communities and they were getting no benefit at all from that. So, so I think that it's important that kind of everyone share, share in this because it's not really fair to have one city get, you know, a windfall of stuff and then throw the impacts on the surrounding areas. So anyways, those are my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
I agree with what my colleagues have pointed out. I also think that it's important that the state sort of sets some parameters here, because otherwise, those large retails have incredible leverage in being able to go to potential host cities, which are maybe starved for jobs or, you know, it's so much that the retailer would be offering a city that, that they could bargain really good deals and use that to, you know, play the lowest, driving to the lowest denominator kind of game that they like to play. So I think it's really important that the state sets some parameters that the sales tax, while the large retailers are, are trying to drive our own retailers, brick and mortar retailers out of business, they're, they're not also taking all the sales tax with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I, I hope we, I think we should support the resolution.
Okay, and, and I would support it as well. So it sounds as if we have a consensus of five supporting this particular resolution. So, thank you, that's so noted. And now we move on to the the right-of-way and California Public Utilities Commission and the request for greater funding for them to keep those railways and those right-of-ways clear and clean of debris, et cetera. So, I would open this up to the council as well. Okay. Councilmember Ford?
Well, I'll take a stab at starting here. I'm, I'm comfortable supporting the resolution for the most part. I'm a little concerned that it might be used as an anti-homeless tool. I, I'm, you know, I think our neighbor city, Rona Park, did a great job recently when, when they had a sizable encampment forming at Roberts Lake Park and Ride and seemed to deal pretty compassionately and transparently with, with folks who were unhoused and, and staying there. And it, so I, I worry about actions taken to clear homeless encampments without providing anywhere for those folks to go. And so that's my only
I'm shocked, absolutely shocked the CPUC is not getting something done adequately. I did not see that coming. But all kidding aside, actually, yeah, this is, appears to be just one of those areas that could use a little sunshine and some help, and I think this would be a good thing to support. I hear the concerns that my colleague brought up. I do know that the thrust of this is not asking the CPUC just to do their job, but it's actually offering to give them more money to do the job that they're supposed already to be doing. And I'm wondering if the requirement could be that they follow the same constraints that cities do in providing some services and alternatives rather than just coming in and essentially clearing a camp. Rona Park is a perfect example, I think, of that. That's probably a bigger discussion to be had, but I think that's certainly a possibility. And it makes a lot of sense. If cities are constrained legally as a response of legal and moral actions to these type of actions, there's no reason the CPUC with lands right next to cities shouldn't have to work the same way. So, I share the concern and hopefully that's the direction of my work, looking to see if I get extra money. Perhaps we can ask the mayor to push that amendment through when he's down there. But with that, I'd be happy to give him direction. Perhaps we can ask the mayor to push that amendment through when he's down there. But with that, I'd be happy to give him direction to support this.
Thank you. I don't see another hands raised on this. I would consider Councilmember Ford's position on that and and I would maybe encourage the Cal Cities if they were looking for a little bit more greater clarification on this to consider the ramifications of that and if there are protections for those that may be using those particular rights of way as encampments that they allow for, as the cities now have to do under state law, housing those that they're going to be removing from those encampments. So I would certainly support this with suggestion to the Cal Cities Executive Committee on that. Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, it might be worthwhile to go to the session on this where they move this forward to see what the discussion is. And there's always the possibility of bringing up concerns at those meetings before it moves to the General Assembly because each of these does get discussed prior to that. So that might be worthwhile.
And would, thank you, Councilmember Harvey, and would there still be support if that particular component was not necessarily part of that? Councilmember Ford?
As Vice Mayor Lemon said, if you can get clarification that the CPUC in conjunction with the cities is subject to the same court ordered restrictions that they can't just evict people without providing them a place to go. As long as they are subject to those same requirements the cities are, then uncomfortable supporting it as is.
Okay. Councilmember Sparks?
I would agree with Councilmember Ford's comments with the possible exception that if there's a, if there's an encampment that's right adjacent to train tracks in a way that's causing a major safety issue with the train going by, it might be imperative to to move people for their own safety. But other than that, I agree with the with everyone else's comments.
Okay, so if I'm understanding the direction given by by the council, if they can support that, the protection regarding the housing of those encamped, we would support this. And if they can't, would we not support this at all?
That sounds right to me.
Okay. So we have
I guess that, you know, the the resolution is is fairly vague in terms of it just calls on the governor and legislature to work with Cal Cities and other stakeholders to provide adequate regulatory authority and necessary funding to assist cities. So I think just getting that that idea into that conversation is enough for me because there's not a, that's general enough that that I don't, yeah, I mean, it's it's all going to be a conversation. So I think the the point is to get that issue raised in the conversation early and make sure Cal Cities are trying to trying to make that point in.
That's that lovely term, regulatory authority. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, when Councilmember Ford just read that quote, it stuck to me. It says to assist cities, which means if they're helping us, it means the cities are still doing these actions, which famous last words should logically, we'll see, mean that then it's subject to the strictures that we're currently bound by and have to respond to. So I think we should be in a good place and I agree with Councilmember Ford. I'd be happy supporting this. I think it's well worth bringing up this point, though, at the discussion of it and making sure. And I would suggest we could just give the mayor discretion. If this goes sideways in such a way that we that he feels personally that it's grievously unfair and doesn't meet our interests, he has the discretion to vote as he sees best. I think he understands the tenor of our concerns and could find, if there is an adequate balance or clarity for him, I would trust his judgment on that. If my colleagues agree.
Thank you very much. I think I got direction on that. And going to the session, unless it goes off the rails, we should be able to support this.
Ouch, to both of you.
Okay. And now we go to the bylaws, the proposed bylaws amendments. And I will certainly open this up for discussion amongst the council members. If there's any concern or changes that they'd like to see or anything like that. Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I mean, as I understand this one, some of what was happening was folks that like couldn't get on a regular seat. Were going to the national seats so that then they got a seat at the California level. So they're just kind of trying to tighten that up so people are really duly appointed from a California perspective. So that's sort of the way it was explained to me is to just kind of tighten that up a little bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Just a kind of silly one on page 117 of our packet. I know they're trying to get rid of the word league and they missed one. There's a league in there in section three on packet page 117. I don't know if you're going to be in a position to point out that error or not.
It is noted. Vice Mayor Lemon?
I will miss the League of Cities. I remember the old nickname for years ago was the Plague of Cities and now that won't be able to be used. So, oh, well. On this particular one, I was just curious. So national seats, something about that taking seats when it's supposed to be our local municipal cities in a statewide organization certainly sounds problematic to me. How many, remind me again, how many national seats do we have? And how many seats are there as a whole on this board? Does the staff or Councilmember Harvey have an idea? I was just curious.
So I don't, I honestly don't know how many seats are on the full board. And I I got the impression, but it was just an impression that they were swapping seats, five for five, but I I'm not positive.
Well, certainly, all these are, all these groups would be local groups. So that would certainly meet the intent. I would be comfortable with us supporting that personally.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks, did you have another comment on there or question?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot to take my hand.
And Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'd support these changes. I think that the swap, it seems like they're swapping membership on the board from nationally elected, people who are elected to the national board are automatically on the the Cal Cities Board and replacing those with seats from the diversity caucuses. And I would support that change.
Okay, so it looks like I've got pretty good direction on that with a consensus. Yeah, I would support this as well. I didn't have any issues. I did think the language on that was a little vague and ambiguous on there. But it seems to me what they're trying to do is to to have more local and a greater inclusion and diversity on the board. So it would be a positive, I would think. So if there's no opposition, I think we'll go ahead and support that as well. Okay, do we have our next presenter, Mr. Obed? Are they present?
We do.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the discussion regarding the pension unfunded accrued liability management policy and update to the status of the UAL refunding project. And I believe this is Ms. Quarter?
Yes, that's me. So I know it's pretty long-winded, but hopefully, and I know the policy is pretty long-winded, but we thought it was important to bring this to everyone tonight just for review again. So, good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow staff, and members of our community. Tonight, we've prepared for a revised draft of the unfunded accrued liability management policy, UAL management policy, pension obligation management policy, however you want to misname it. But it's really a strategy to deal with our pension obligations as well as an update of where we stand with, you know, we've been working up pretty hard behind the scenes on these bond refundings and where we stand on getting that process moving forward. I wanted to give you a brief summary of where we are. Next slide, please. So I'd like to just start off by describing why we're bringing it back. And so as we've been working out behind the scenes on what our pension refunding should look like, we kept going back to what's our purpose, what's the intention, what's the overall strategy and purpose that we're trying to obtain? And we felt like really the policy will help us address each one of those questions as we keep that discussion going forward. So if we have a solid policy and a foundation that puts forth what our objectives are, then we can better set forward what our funding strategy should be, what our overall funding for the different pieces should be in order to make sure we're meeting both councils' direction as well as our community direction in order to deal with this debt service. So what the core objectives and the purpose of the policy is really to address the existing and future pension unfunded accrued liability. So it's that long-term strategy with our balance of the saving and funding. We want to actively show our funders as well, too, if we're going out for pension obligations. We want to keep a good creditworthiness and show rating agencies that really we're thoughtful and we're paying attention to what this means overall to the city. And we have a plan to address this in advance so that we can be in a good position to pay them as well as our other creditors. So we have a good financial strategy going forward. It also gives us tools to manage and not just manage the funding and where it goes, but actual active tools. If this happens, then this. But with that flexibility to change due to other circumstances like emergency declarations or actuarial differences, which are known in these CalPERS reports. So it's giving that focus to what what changes are we expecting, what can we address, what should we be flexible for and how we're going to manage that flexibility and unknown. You can go to the next slide, please. So that really establishes the the goals and objectives overall in this policy. We're here to establish a target. That's a key objective that we have here. And when we brought this draft policy to council before for just initial feedback, that was one of those key items where we were asked to, you know, really massage, we go, what is the funding level that we should be targeting? What is a reasonable and why? And we'll get into that in the next, you know, in a few slides. But that is something that we have included in this draft. We also have the goals and objective of providing assets for payments into the future as well as tools for management and control of the contribution variables. So as things change, we also have to change and be adaptive to them. We need to maintain the city's sound financial position and creditworthiness. And that's not just paying down the debts. That's having a good reserve balance. That's managing our streets. That's a holistic view of what we're going to do to make sure we have a good position on our financials. We're going to strive to make additional discretionary payments and accelerate the UAL paydowns to reduce these interest costs. Again, that's management and that's financial management behind the scenes with that flexibility. It provides guidance on making those annual budget decisions for suggested or additional supplementary payments to a possible payment to a 115 or managed trust. It creates a sustainability and fiscally sound future budget. So it's creating a budget mechanism for us to evaluate this when we're in those discussions of what what is the pro and cons of funding streets and parks versus a pension obligation and savings that we can possibly put into other functions. And it again demonstrates the prudent financial management. We're going to ensure that pension funding decisions are protected for both our current stakeholders as well as our future. So this is setting in policy so that future stakeholders don't just go, okay, well, all these savings from our pension obligation bonds that we we earned, we're not going to spend them there anymore. We're going to put them somewhere else. So this helps, gives us a goal and objective of where these things should be put and how to put them there. As well, the key key part of this was to create transparency. What are these pensions and why are we making this policy around funding them? Why are they so important? Next slide, please. So not to get too much into it, but you know, here's the background of where we are and why we're talking pensions. So the city does not participate in social security, which is typically a 6.2% employer required contribution, which is made for so that when you retire, you have the funds from your social security. Instead, we have a defined benefit pension plan as administered by CalPERS. And we have multiple plans for different types of employees that are negotiated at different times. So for each one of these plans, we have two different types of contributions that we make for these plans. There's a normal cost, which is our regularly contributed funds to CalPERS, which are based on a percentage of salaries, much like a social security contribution, very similar, where there's sometimes the employee and employer contributions as well. Then there's this unfunded liability piece. So this is the the rest of everything that CalPERS is missing in order to make their debt service into the future. So it's an annual payment that we pay to pay down that additional debt where our assets don't meet our liability. So they add these on in layers every single year, and these are called bases. And these bases are amortized and we make those contributions on an annual basis. So within the policy, we've included additional best practices to manage these bases, including reducing that ramp up period, which is that any new basis or that initial base is amortized over five years. And so that leads to negative amortization where you're paying interest on interest. And we don't want to have to do that. So we're going to work with CalPERS to eliminate that, to put those bases in at the full rate. We're also going to make sure we apply for level annual payments in order to reduce costs for the future. And this also allows for better budgeting and budgeting management into the future. And we are, again, as things continuously change with CalPERS, with us, with our funding structure as well, we want to make sure we review and manage these actuarial reports that come out from CalPERS because there really is no one-time solution. This needs to be something that is touched, managed, reviewed, evaluated, and keep an eye on what's happening with CalPERS and address those into the future. Next slide, please. So the overriding policy objectives, so the key funding level objective, which is setting that targeted funding level. And then there's establishment and operation of a pension rate stabilization fund, which also is a 115 trust, and we'll get into that a little bit more. And again, we have a, we've included within the policy components where we can minimize some payments to a pension rate stabilization fund if needed due to financial hardship. We also included pieces for transparency in reporting, the annual budget on direction on future annual budgeting as well as the required as-needed review of the policy into the future. Next slide. Thank you. So we're getting into the nitty-gritty of the policy now. So it's kind of the summary of of everything high level. But the key components, what we wanted to bring back to council and those key focus for us for going forward with our discussions about pension obligations or any future cash funding or other types of funding, really start with finding a funding level objective. This did, starting with our key objectives, when our last meeting, like I said, we discussed, you know, what what should our objective be for funding ratio? Why should it be that ratio? So in doing some background analysis, we are proposing a funded ratio of of 90%. That would be our goal. But it would be, of course, a range where we would make sure we try not to fall less than 80%. And again, we'll go into a little bit more, but really this is based on actual suggestions. So Bartell and Associates, they've done previous presentations to council around 115 trusts and pensions. This is really a goal, the 90 to 93%. So they actually are saying that it should be higher, but we're proposing something a little bit softer and we can always do more if desired. Staying below 100% avoids that super funding status in case there's unusually strong investment earnings, which is exactly what we're seeing right now. And again, that's why we're saying, no, we don't want to be gung ho and say, no, we need to fund 100%. Our goal is 100%. We're going to be the best ever and 100% fund because we do not want to be in that that category of super funding and having funds that, you know, that we could have put to a better purpose, like our streets, our parks, our community. We don't want to see that. We want to make sure that we're, we're spending our money in the places where it needs to be. And again, so this funding level objective also takes into consideration not just the funds that are sitting at CalPERS, but also the funds that we could maintain within the section 115 trust or that pension rate stabilization fund. I'm going to say section 115 trust, but really that is synonymous with a pension rate stabilization fund for our purposes. Next slide, please. So again, this is a lot of numbers they threw onto a slide and I try not to do this, I'm so sorry. But really this is just to show some of the background work that we have been doing to really target and figure out why and what percentages are going to be reasonable for the city. So right now we find ourselves in a place where in 2020, CalPERS had a loss, they had, we had a UAL loss of 640,000, just due to the investments. And so after that loss, now we know that they've earned an estimated 21.3% return on that investment. It was a loss, but now they've, they've far exceeded that average of that 5.5% return over the 10 years. And so now we're seeing, okay, well, wait, that's that key point where we want to make sure we do not become a super funded status right off the bat when we do an obligation or bond issuance. We don't want to go out and receive monies or ask for monies and pay interest on something that's not needed. And so we're looking at overall, if our projections are showing that with the funding of 90% today or with the, at the 2020 level, it would actually provide us coverage at 100% for the 2021 UAL balance. Of course, we don't know what else, what other things are happening with the fund. We don't know whether other amortization bases based on life or expectations are changing. So it again is just an estimate. But just based on these, we know, you know, within a reason, we're going to get that 100% coverage if we funded 90% today. That's, that's if they decrease their, their discount rate to 6.5%, which again, we are expecting. But because we don't know, we do know that it is decreased to 6.8%, then we would actually be in a super funded status if we funded at the 90% and just paid it right to CalPERS. So that's why we're, we're really targeting a, a managed process where it's the 115 trust with the payments to CalPERS that would get us at that 90% funding. So that we can still continue to be in a good funded status without super funding. Next slide, please. So other key guidance that's included in here, and this is again, just to keep the continuance of, of guidance, best practices, what we should be doing besides refinancing and targeting and bond, is making those annual prepayments to UAL. We have currently done this for at least the last five years and it saved us 3.5% annually on the pension debt so that we're, that UAL payment, because they do charge additional fees if you're not making that timely payment. Additional discretionary payments, it gives us guidance on the reserves, one-tight revenues and fund surpluses. On making sure we're evaluating those, if they should be used for additional discretionary payments and included within the budget every year. Managing existing debt, so evaluating what debt we currently have and evaluating the best purpose for it. So if there is debt that needs to be brought on or that is currently on our books, evaluating whether we should use tax exempt funds to go and get a bond and so that we can actually use our reserve funds in a better manner to pay down debt if we can save more money, which is currently what we're looking at. So just taking these practices that we're currently using and looking at and putting them into a policy for future reference. We also need to make sure that we're looking at our sources of revenues. This again is something we just did with our fee adoption. We made sure that all that pension cost that's associated with every staff person, we don't just look at their salary or just their benefits. It's the full cost of employment that's included with our fee structure. So that we are making sure that we are covering those additional costs. The pension obligation financing, again, making sure we are minimizing cash flow savings. So we, we have to have a minimum threshold of cash flow savings before we go out for financing. We're not just going to say, oh, interest rates have decreased, we're just going to go out and get some new pension obligation financing. We're going to actually strategically evaluate and make sure we're going to get the cash flow savings that we desire before jumping into refinancing. We're going to make sure we do an annual review and evaluation during our budget process along with the valuation reports and propose additional discretionary, additional discretionary payments to CalPERS along with our budget dissection, you know, to make sure we're addressing it within each type of fund. And we're making those payments as needed, either for ADP directly to CalPERS or additional payments to a 115 trust. And a key, another component, actually made sure our consultant made sure we include this because he sees this as a pitfall across other cities and agencies as they roll out these policies, is making sure that the shared expense of these pensions are across all funds. It's not something that the general fund tries to absorb wholly, that these really are attributed across all of our funds. This is a general fund activity. This is also contributed by our employees that are within our water and sewer funds. And so it should be allocated appropriately and this gives us this mechanism and guidance to make sure that we're following that. Next slide, please. So I know I've been talking a lot, hopefully just a little bit longer, but this is really pretty important. Our, and we've been talking about a 115 trust, also pension rate stabilization fund for quite a while. And we're still really proud that we're getting included within the policy. And within this, it kind of has three key parts. And first part is just establishment. It's just that we should establish one, we should create one, and it could either be self-managed or a section 115. We are currently looking more into a 115 managed trust, just because the size of our city and our resources, having something that is set within a specific managed fund would, could be appealing. We are currently looking at two different options and we'll get into that in the next slide. So then after we establish a fund, we then have to put monies into the fund. And these are going to be generated by sequestered savings as well as sequestered surplus. Sequestered savings are calculated at issuance of a bond. So this only happens once when we have the issuance of the bond that we calculate what these sequestered savings are. And this is a funding of 50% of the average total savings. So we take the total savings from the issuance for 10 years and we distribute 50% of that savings every year to this pension obligation fund. So it's set at a set time, but then it's funded for those 10 years at that average total savings estimate. The set number, it's scheduled, it's put into those funds, that's what's budgeted to be transferred to suspension rate stabilization fund if we do choose to issue bonds for pension obligations. There is of course mechanisms to opt out of these transfers. Primarily the option due to, again, a fiscal emergency. We have a fiscal emergency, we need these funds for other operations, yes, we can, we can just continue the contributions at this level, adjust to a different level and make adjustments as needed. Another option of opting out or is rather opting into something different is if our additional funding would cause our fund balance of fixed, of the asset balance to exceed 110% of the unfunded liability, then at that point, we could put those sequestered savings to a pension obligation bond call fund. So it would move those, so they're still set, they're set for pensions, but rather than continuing to super fund a 115 trust, it could put into a bond call fund. So it's just another mechanism to alleviate some, some fundings. And then those sequestered surplus is just that, it's surplus funds that council is delegating or identifying during our, our budget meetings and saying, yes, this is surplus funds that should be used and transferred to our 115 trust. So this is funding it. So it's all just putting money in. And then once we have the money in there, we have to operate this fund. So again, it just gets those two different types of funding. And but once they're in this pension rate stabilization fund, they could only be used for pension obligations. So that is UAL payments, that is additional discretionary payments as well as normal cost payments. So managing this fund is a goal of maintaining those level objectives. So if we don't want to super fund CalPERS by making those additional discretionary payments and super funding it by contributing 90% right off the bat and automatically getting to 100%, then this would be our additional funds that we would be putting into it and managing. And if we did get to a surplus funding balance of more than 110%, again, it's that same ratio that we're using for the sequestered savings, then we could start using that fund for our normal costs. So that would be the tool to eliminate additional risks of super, super funding those assets. Next slide. So I just talked about the pension rate stabilization fund and it, and this is really what a pension rate stabilization fund as a, as a managed fund, not a self-managed fund, but managed through another agency is a 115 trust. And really what is a 115 trust and how does it help Cattotti? So it is a separate trust allowed under IRS tax code. And these trusts are allowed to place other types of investments and these funds and the investments that aren't currently allowed under the state code. So they're allowed to invest in things that are a little bit more risky than we're allowed to, and thus they can earn more returns than we currently can under just a LEAF or county treasury or even our RBC CD funds because they have to be in AAA bonded CDs. So they, they are allowed to have a little bit more risk and earn more returns. The other part of that though, is they can only be used for pension funding. They, like I said previously, cannot be used to pay the bond because that's not considered a pension funding. The pension's already been funded by the bond, so you can't use it to pay the bond payments. But you can pay ADP, UAL and normal costs. And these are currently, there's a couple of managed trusts that we're looking at. And we're currently evaluating CalPERS, they have their own 115 trust management team as well as PARS. And so we'll be bringing that back to council in a future session. So how does it help Cattotti? So CalPERS pension costs are increasing, if you haven't known. I mean, except for the 21.3% return that we're going to see, they're still increasing and they're changing faster than our revenues can really offset. This CalPERS pension investments are highly volatile. We had a loss in 2020, interest gains, there's other actuarial differences. And so they change in plans and tiers and things that we want to help stabilize so that we can stabilize also our budgeting funding for it. So we can know what we can pay for our streets and perks and projects that we have going on around the city. As stated previously, LEAF and county returns are historically low. We are, we are earning very minimal returns in our current investments. And so this would give us the opportunity to not just have money sitting in LEAF, but have a little bit of funding available for pensions to pay even a normal cost or UAL payments that are earning some better interest rates. It also allows us to plan ahead, increase yields and save money while making pension costs more manageable. So it is isolated funds, so these funds are restricted for purpose and can allow us to better manage that and know that that's what these funds are for into our future. Next slide, please. So now the easy breezy stuff, so transparent reporting, that's something is a goal no matter what. But I'm glad it's a part of the policy that we're going to make sure. We are updating the city website to include these annual actuarial valuation reports for transparency to our community as well as anyone, users of our financials so that they're not just getting our financial report, which has a significant amount of disclosure around our pension obligations, but also the actual actuarial reports from CalPERS to see how detailed and thorough they really are and what, what the balance means to us. Again, we're going to make sure we publish the annual financial report and vital pension plan information on our website. Next slide. So the next key point is making sure we have that component as a part of our annual budget consideration. And, and we also have a periodic review policy. So it's no surprise that we are going to be evaluating our 115 trust balance, our funded balance every single year and bringing that back to council as well as that consideration of what we're proposing for surplus funds to be funded to a 115 trust in balance with our other investments for the city. Next slide. So our next steps, so again, it's our policy review, time to comment, provide feedback. Initial gut feelings, guidance on what you think would be a better best practice or what you would like to see when you see a final version come back to you. We're going to bring back the UAL refunding proposal as well as the policy for adoption. Key points of that refunding proposal that we're really going to focus on again is that refunding amount and rate that we're discussing here with the policy. So as well as the refunding term, are we sticking more to that 15 or 20 years based on our savings rates of actual interest rates we're seeing in the market? We're going to be asking about whether private versus public placement is going to be best as well as additional incremental fundings that might be rewarding to use towards streets. As we might be also looking at streets funding anyway, is there additional incremental funding that would be advantageous for us to get right now since we already have the cost of issuance for the bonds and the interest rates are so low. So that is something we will be bringing back to council. And then after that, we'll be proceeding with the financing proposals using council direction at the previous meeting. And then moving forward also with proceeding on that 115 trust, what, what decisions we want around whether we want to do self-funded, self-managed, a CalPERS or a PARS project trust. And then bringing back finally to council the bond issuance as well as the 115 trust establishment. So that's a lot of words. For this presentation, a lot of ideas and concepts and thank you for the time and I really appreciate your feedback in this matter.
Thank you, Angela. That's a lot of information. I think it's wonderful that we have a management policy on there and it just shows our creditors and our credit rating that we are doing our due diligence. If we're going to, if we're going to look at something like this and adopt that. So I appreciate all the efforts put into that and the explanation. And I think it really helps with our transparency. So with that, I will open it up to council. Council member Sparks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. Would, would you like me to just go one at a time or, or tell them all at once? I don't know.
Whatever you would prefer, let, maybe let's just do one at a time.
Okay, let's do one at a time. First with the 115 trust, I was wanting to know, is there, I, I think the answer to this is no, but is there any ability to make withdrawals from that trust for emergency situations?
No, absolutely not. What mechanism we would have for that is we make with every payroll, we make normal cost payments. And so what we would do is we would reimburse ourselves for the normal cost distribution. So that would be our mechanism for pulling funding out of, out a trust.
Okay, thank you. I was curious why, what was the purpose of having that threshold at 110% rather than 100%? For like, once, if we've super funded at 110, then we're going to start putting the money somewhere else. Just curious, why not 100%?
So that was just for, for guidance, working with our, our team because we are looking at being 100% funded if we even just look at 90% right now. And so that is the current mechanism where we don't want to completely deplete everything in the 115 trust by starting to use it with normal cost. Because with this current gain, they are expecting it is going to come back down. And so that could be something we're offsetting then again in the next year. And so we want to give ourselves a little bit of a buffer and that 10% didn't seem outside of the range. But again, we can, it is just a lever to begin to use it for normal cost as well as funding. Yeah, for normal cost. So that absolutely could be revised if, if council directed down to 100% because as a use for normal cost.
Okay, that makes sense. And just in general, do you have any sense of the, the? In, just in general, do you have any sense of the, the typical fees? And we would expect to pay in a one fifteen trust? And then what the interest rate benefit would be that we would be getting compared to LEAF or where we have our money now?
I do have some, but unfortunately I've only received it from one of them. So I'd like to present something now in case the one from the other group is a little bit different. So I mean, an average, it's looking more, it's very much along the lines of what CalPERS says they're going to be earning. The six percent, but they have different rate structures within them. So you can invest within each type, you pick your type that you'd like to be kind of like your 401K, right? You want to be in, in this program, right? And so you, you pick one of those and those have different fees associated with it as well. And so we'll definitely bring that back when we propose moving forward with either of those.
Okay, the reason I was asking is it's sort of relevant to the policy decision because we're really giving up the flexibility on our funds. So I'd like to know, you know, how much benefit we're getting when we give that flexibility up.
I can, I can let you know currently our LEAF interest, the monthly interest that we're earning in LEAF is point two. Yeah, very, very low. Whereas these are earning more of what like CalPERS is earning, a little bit less. So they're probably more in the ten percent right now.
Okay. Okay, different topic. The, and I'm sorry for not sending you these questions ahead of time. As you were explaining things more, I was understanding better and it was making me think of more questions. So there was this, this payment requirement in the policy would be fifty percent of the average total savings at bondage, at issuance. I remember looking at those amortization tables and seeing that our cash flow savings in some years would be a lot greater than in other years. But it sounds like this fifty percent payment is going to be just level throughout all of the years. Was there any thought of in the policy perhaps doing like a per year, like fifty percent of the the estimated cash flow savings per each year would go into it so that we're not overburning ourselves with these extra payments during years when we're not really seeing substantial cash flow savings?
So even though the cash, so the cash flow savings are based on making those payments to CalPERS. But if we do a pension obligation bond, we're no longer making those payments to CalPERS. So those really go, go away and they become the bond payment. So that becomes a level payment unless we have like a, we're talking about that again, like a trailer where it is level and then trails off. And so we could, but again, it's in reference to a point in time that's never going to exist again. And so while we're comparing it to something that exists now currently, it's not there anymore. And so having that going into the future for variable payments or savings is going to lead to budget differentials. Like why are we saving, you know, two hundred thousand this year? We're only going to save a hundred and fifty next year and then we're going to save three hundred thousand next year. It's really a budgeting tool to keep things more level. If anything, I mean, we could include like a, an escalator or something as we know costs are going to increase with PERS. But really that's the thought between keeping them level and consistent with a point in time because really that's what your comparison is to.
Okay, thank you. Another question, can you sort of related, I, I wasn't quite clear on what applying for level payments with CalPERS meant, like early on, I think on your second or third slide? Can you just explain what that meant?
So what we can do with CalPERS is we can do, and I think we maybe brought this up one of the first times we brought up the refunding, is you can actually, um, Damian, you can help me, but I'm not remembering.
It's like a fresh start.
Fresh start, thank you. You can apply for a fresh start. So they take the rest of your balance that's unfunded. And they go, okay, let's just do an equal amortization over the period of time. So you're not dealing with those variations. And so that would be something either we would evaluate to identify whether we should do an actual fresh start with CalPERS, which then locks you in. Or we can act as if we're doing a fresh start and make the payments as if we're doing a fresh start. And then we're not locked into any specific payment amount with CalPERS. So we have those tools available to us to make those payments more fluid or they stay the same.
So in the policy, is, in the, the way we've got the policy written now, is it stating that we're going to actually do that fresh start with CalPERS? Or is it leaving it open for the possibility of us sort of faking it on our own?
It's leaving it open for both. And so that we will, we will evaluate it and we will apply for if there's the savings.
Okay. And then I think I have just, oh, two more questions. One was about the five percent minimum cash flow savings that would trigger us to look at. I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's saying if, if, if issuing a new bond would, would save us five percent cash flow, then we'll look at it. Is that the idea? It wouldn't obligate us to go into that, would just be we're going to look at it.
It's just a threshold for staff because we are a small city or small funded. You know, going out for when there's a one percent savings cash flow is, is going to be more detrimental and cost us more possibly in long run and the, in the time of, of doing the projections, getting the consultants, bringing everyone on board than that. So we'll look at it and bring it up and further evaluate it once it reaches that threshold.
Okay, makes sense. And then my last question was about the, about the ninety percent funding target. It sounds to me like what we're proposing right now is actually going to, once we count, once we calculate in twenty twenty one investment returns, it's actually going to get us right to a hundred percent. But I was sort of understanding it that the actuaries tend to recommend funding at a ninety to ninety-three percent level. So I'm wondering, should we, should we fund it a little lower than, than ninety percent right now so that we don't jump right up to a hundred? If we really want to long-term have ninety to ninety-three as our target? Does that, does, am I thinking about that right or is that?
You're absolutely correct. And that's why we really wanted, one of the key reasons we wanted to bring this back to councils because we find ourselves in that situation where funding at ninety percent, even though it is a goal, is probably not advantageous for us at that, this point in time. Where, but we could also look at it in a holistic funding where we have it in that one fifteen trust as well as paying down with pension obligation bonds or, or funding with actual payments from cash or bonding. So those three can combined create that funding status at that ninety percent. And that could be a goal, but really what a target should be, we are really still kind of looking at staying at that comfortable seventy-seven percent. And, and just like it says in the staff report, we're currently at seventy percent funding, funded level. And so we really are looking at targeting currently the seventy-seven percent, even though it's outside of this policy, it's not something, it, it's an odd place for us to be right now. But we would also supplant that with additional cash funding through that one fifteen trust. So we have a total funding of probably more around that eighty percent. So we're still within our goal, we're within our policy. And then we see where twenty twenty one gets us and where we come out at the end. And if they do this rate adjustment and bring us up to that a hundred percent automatically.
I, I, that sounds good to me. I feel comfortable with that eighty percent funding level that's within our policy and then is not going to super fund us. So, okay, thank you so much for the time of letting us know all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that last question was perfect because it kind of, the response encapsulated some of my general concerns. It appears to me, I, I'm personally convinced of the benefit that this can bring for the community. There's no question about it. You don't have to be, have a strong economic background. What was it, zero point two percent versus something closer to ten percent? That, that's, for me, that's even me, that's an easy calculation. But what it does strike me is to maximize this benefit, there's going to be a need for really strong oversight and ongoing adjustments. And it, the question that came to mind during the presentation to me was, what is the time impact in staff? Are personnel sufficient for the oversight to do this? I know that because of this, we're looking at a one fifteen plan as opposed to something self-managed. But even that, I can tell from the presentation, is still going to take careful management and adjustment every single year. So I'm just curious what the impact looks like on top of all the other incredibly numerous responsibilities that, that you have.
I appreciate that concern. No, I, I do understand, and that's why I wanted this policy and it works directly with our consultants to make sure this policy had not just guidance, but actually action. Like the, we should do this. And so that way, it, it, it provides a better role for how we should manage it. Because when you don't have those barriers, then it becomes more time consuming and more difficult to manage. With this plan in place, we would be looking to bring on, we, and we currently use Bartel to manage our GAZB reporting. And so we would maybe be looking for a different consultant or something else to help us doing more of the legwork like we're currently seeing and working with CalMuni on as far as evaluating savings and what it is and taking those actuarial reports and doing the deep dive into what this language actually means for where our funding is and what we should be at. So we, we probably would bring them on board for a minimal fee every year. Nothing like this whole refunding, you know, it would be a much smaller scope. And it says, and I do believe that's something that they are looking into because they are also pushing and really liking this policy that we've put together collaboratively. And so it does have that component in it and they do understand that we have limited resources to manage these. But just like we have, RBC manages our investments in CDs, we would then have a one fifteen trust that manages our investments in our pension funds. And so it, it really is something we're currently doing already. And since these are, though it is an investment, it is not, it's not something that's always actionable or always changeable because you do have the restricted uses for it. And it only changes so much. And so managing the valuation reports that only come out once a year and they come out a year late is our biggest issue. Because it's trying to do that whole projection of what is really going on with CalPERS now to make decisions now. And that's where we would rely on probably our consultants.
Good, okay. Like I said, I, I'm convinced of the value of this and I'm thinking getting extra help to make sure this works. I'm sure just looking at those numbers we discussed, there's room and ready for that to work fine. It just strikes me that the success of this will only be captured, I think, through obviously close and careful management of it. And it sounds like that's well planned for. So thank you for answering that. That, that helps me.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thanks, Mayor Moore. So a couple of things, that the policy currently, the ninety percent target funding ratio is with CalPERS. It's not a combination of with CalPERS and the pension stabilization fund. It's ninety percent with CalPERS and a hundred percent between CalPERS and the pension stabilization fund with a cap of a hundred and ten percent before we start using the pension stabilization fund to pay normal costs. So I'm comfortable with that, but that's, I think, a little different than what you were describing. And so that just needs to get clarified. I, I like the version that's in the policy now, which is ninety percent with CalPERS. And we use a pension stabilization fund to manage the ninety to a hundred percent above that. One issue with the policy currently to address this issue of, say, we know now that there's an approximately twenty-one percent return, which is going to drop our unfunded liability. But the current policy and I think it's, anyway, B three, the operation of the fund says that staff calculates the, the funded ratio, which is the CalPERS funded ratio. And if it's below ninety, then we shall make a discretionary payment. So if we actually follow, if you actually, as staff just implemented the policy this year, you calculate our funding ratio and bring it up to ninety percent, which would then cause us to be super funded next year. Because as you say, those reports are delayed a year, even though we have this preliminary information. So in that, in that operation piece, I hope we can add a sentence about taking into account anything that's known but not yet official from, from CalPERS, you know. So it, as, as Councilmember Sparks said, it would be silly to fund us to the ninety percent level now when we know that would put us in a super funded position next year. So I hope that, that paragraph in, in B three and operation can be somehow get that fixed. One other issue in that same section of operations, there's a bit of a conflict between the second paragraph and the third. The second paragraph said, if there's money in the pension stabilization fund and our CalPERS funded ratio is below ninety percent, then, then we shall make a payment from the pension stabilization fund, which is, I think, what we intend. But the last paragraph said monies in the pension rate stabilization fund shall be allowed to accumulate until such time as we get to a hundred and ten percent. So there's a conflict between those two. That paragraph needs to be clear. It's not just money shall be allowed to accumulate. It's, we won't use those money for normal costs until we're above a hundred and ten percent. And there's also a, in that paragraph, it's kind of a misstated, it says that, that the pension stabilization fund combined with market value of assets exceeds the normal accrued liability by a hundred and ten percent. If you exceed the liability by a hundred and ten percent, that's a two hundred and ten percent funding ratio. So I don't think we're trying to carry an extra hundred percent.
Yes, thank you.
Now, Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for all the previous comments. I agree with what's been said. I am very happy to see that we are putting into place a policy with guidelines for staff and all that and our intent for future councils, because that was one of my concerns in the very beginning is we do this funding and then monies could be used for other things. So I'm, I'm happy to see that we have a policy that shows what, at this point in time, where we at, are at, what our intentions are so that future councils can know what we intended when we did that. Oftentimes, we don't kind of know what kind of led us there. And then we're like, well, what were, what were they thinking when they did this? So it's good to have this policy that, that really lays out our intentions. Obviously, that can change over time and probably will change over time as the situation changes. But I'm, I'm glad to see all of these guidelines. I'm glad to see the, there's a lot of flexibility with ranges and things because you don't want to get, you know, that tight, you know, such that we don't have flexibility when we need it. So thank you for that.
Thank you. The only question I had on that was much on the lines of Councilmember Harvey's concern. If, and if we were to adopt something like this, would this be more set in concrete if it were a resolution or ordinance that would, you know, make sure that that stays in, you know, as directed?
I, I don't think, I mean, this attorney may have some other feedback, but I don't. I mean, one is no more binding than the other necessarily, is my understanding. But the ordinance is just a more cumbersome process to change as opposed to resolution with the noticing and the multiple hearings and all that. I think that's the only difference.
That's correct.
Thank you. Susan, you had another question or no?
I, yes, I, I guess the way I was understanding what we were really doing as part of our annual budgeting process that this would be just another aspect of things that we would incorporate into an annual review to see if, if, if the policy as we have it still works and fits with the direction that we're going. And that, that maybe was my misassumption, but that's kind of, I thought where we were going.
Yeah, I'll just, sorry, Angela. So I, I think in practice, what it would be, would be, you know, every year in budget. You know, every year in budget time, we would be evaluating our unfunded liability levels. And making recommendations to the council, mostly about funding, but I think certainly if. If we run into. If we run into issues with the policy, like the policy is clearly not covering the situation that we're confronting, then that is probably when we would be. Having a policy level discussion about this with the council. But generally, I think it'd be more, more just operationally like this is, you know, this is our funded liability level. This is the amount of money that we should be by policy putting away to meet those objectives. So it'd be more of that type of discussion annually. Unless there's things with policy that seem to be not working for the situation we're in.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion by the council at this moment, I will open it up for public comment on this. If we have any interest in it. Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. It looks like you've got enough information there, Angela, to address some of the questions and concerns. And then this will be coming back to the council with further information at a future date.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, conceptual, I think, is fantastic. And if the numbers work and, and we can be diligent and disciplined, I think it could be a very advantageous program. Thank you for that, all that work. I am going to open up public comment for the last item regarding League of California Cities. Suggestions, because I did not open that up for public comment. So at this point, I will open that up if there's any public comment that we missed before. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure we allow for that. Okay, right now we will move on to item 11, the City Manager's Report. Mr. Obed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So. A couple updates on the kind of emergency front. As we all know, there's a COVID testing site at the Cattati Park and Ride at 116 in Old Red. And that, that has been currently there on. On Wednesdays from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They are expanding the hours. So now, starting next week. It's going to be there Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And as, as I think, well, as we found out, it's, it's a bit dicey to do a walk-up. You may or may not be served if you just do a walk-up to the test site. So. Reservations or appointments, I should say, are strongly encouraged and they can be made at. LHI, LHI dot care. There's an appointment website there where people can log in and register for appointments. And they do the, they do the PCR test there, so that the lab tests for COVID. Then tomorrow, Wednesday, September 25th at 5:00 PM. There's a joint evacuation drill occurring. And this is organized by our police department, Sonoma State University Police and Runaway Public Safety. And they're doing a mock evacuation drill using the high-low siren equipped patrol vehicles. This is the, this is the siren system that all Sonoma County law enforcement agencies use for emergency evacuations. So no matter where you are in the county, you hear there's someone thing if there's an evacuation underway. And. Again, this is just a test, but in the future, the tagline is, if you hear the high-low, it's time to go. So that is going on tomorrow. We've been putting out a lot of noticing around that. So hopefully. At least most people know what's going on and don't actually evacuate. Public Works. So in regards with, in regards to water conservation, we're currently meeting our 20% water reduction goal. So that's good. And this requirement continues to the end of 2021. So it's going to be important that we. Stick with it through the rest of the year and hopefully we'll be in a better water situation this winter. Next week is Creek Week, so. You can join, you can join us at the group cleanup that will be at Pocket Park. That's at the end of La Salle, the Libin to Santa Rosa on Wednesday, September 22nd from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Or join the Go on Your Own Cleanup Scavenger Hunt anytime between September 19th to 25th. And then people can get information about this on Daily Axe.org, upcoming events. As the council knows, the West Side Street Project is set to begin next week, in fact, is when they are going to begin mobilizing for the project. And the scope of the work includes complete reconstruction of West Cattati Avenue, West School Street, Clifford, Richardson. In addition to a new pedestrian pathway on West School Street between East School Street Tunnel and West Sierra Avenue. They're also reconstructing John Roberts Drive. Robin and Condor Court over here on the, on the east side. And then finally, Overland Highway between Myrtle and Page Street is being rebuilt. It's the real. Junkie section of roadway along Betts Park there. So that's going to get rebuilt. And so this is just the next in a series of projects that the city council has authorized in our multi-year investment in the city road system to improve roads and. With the goal of reducing long-term maintenance costs once we get some of these. Roads that are in poor condition finally fixed. And then. I don't mean to steal anyone's thunder, but this weekend on Saturday, there's a community meeting coming up. With our ad hoc, so Councilmember Harvey and Councilmember Sparks. Will be here at City Hall in the tent, actually in the tent behind City Hall next to the Cattati Room from 10:00 AM to noon. To just have the first community meeting to discuss. You know, ideas to be a more inclusive system, community here in Cattati. We're also kicking off the Bike Ped Master Plan update with Planning Commission meeting on September 20th. At 6:00 PM via Zoom. And so that's going to kick off, it's probably going to be about a year-long process to update Bike Ped Master Plan. We're also beginning the Housing Element Update Process, which, as you all know, sets the plan for everything housing over the next eight years. And we do plan on the next council meeting coming to the council with the consultant agreements. And assuming the council authorizes those agreements. We are also, we have tentatively scheduled. Are working on tentatively scheduling a joint meeting with the City Council and Planning Commission. At the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be October 12th. So we don't have a time set yet, if that would be early or if it would be at 6:00 PM normal start time, but. We'll be in contact soon to finalize the details. And then for both the Bike Ped Master Plan and the Housing Element, we're going to be tabling at the Farmer's Market for the rest of September. To gather contact information for anyone that's interested and also discuss these upcoming projects. And there's also webpages created for each of these that people can access to get information about them. This fall, we have some fall programs starting or continuing, including youth soccer classes, Zumba Gold classes, Akido classes, children's theater productions. And an after-school enrichment program at the Frona Fuddy Ranch. As I mentioned earlier, Farmer's Markets are continuing through the end of September. That's 4:30 to 7:30 at Plaza Park every Wednesday. The Cattati accordion festival is coming up on the weekend of September 25th and 26th in Plaza Park. Anyone interested in this can purchase tickets or get information about it at cattatifest.com. And then the Chamber is holding their annual Cattati Music Fest. In La Plaza Park on Saturday, October 9th from noon to four. This is a free event with live music and lots of fun. And I'll also add that I've started doing video updates. None's come out yet. I recorded my first one today, so we'll see how awkward and silly that looks, but it's going to come out tomorrow. So y'all can look at that tomorrow and make memes. It's going to be the, it's going to be the start of the video series. This one is covering a lot of the items I'm talking about now in the council, in this council member. Or City Council Managers' Update. But in future additions, I do also plan to cover. Recent council actions, things like that. So to try to keep people informed on what the council has decided on kind of the important, at least the important items. And if you need information on any of these items, you can always get the latest information on our website at cattatycity.org or the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Are there any questions for Mr. Obed? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thanks. First, Damian, I recommend you not do a video updating great detail about refunding pension obligations. But tomorrow's evacuation drill is, are the city and the police department prepared with like. Recorded phone messages when people call that, that say, if this is just a drill, stay at home and things like that. I'm a little concerned. I've gotten several messages, but I'm a little concerned about. I don't know, the 20% of people who won't know what's going on.
Yeah, certainly will be people that have no idea what's going on. I'll, I'll let Mike chime here in a second, but it's going to be at the. The drill itself will be relatively brief at 5:00. And so. Here at City, on the City Hall side of things, we will still be here at City Hall to answer phones. Of course, the dispatch center will be continuing to be up through 24/7. But Mike, if you have anything to add to that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, of course. So at about five minutes before the drill starts. I'm going to send the next little alert out reminding people that it is a drill and not to evacuate. We will have two dispatchers on answering phone calls. And then as the officers are driving around the areas evacuating, on their PA, they will be saying this is a drill. Only this is a drill, do not evacuate. And there's been a lot of messaging on this, but of course, there are going to be people that don't know and will be surprised. And it will be about 10 minutes at most. So I think we've got it covered.
Thanks.
Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Mr. Obed, do you have any idea what the safety, COVID safety protocols are going to be at the accordion festival by any chance?
I do not know the specifics other than what's generally required, you know, in outdoor events. I don't know of anything specific beyond the outdoor general requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And then the only other question I had, I don't see any other hands up from the council members. On the video updates, what mediums will you be placing that into? Facebook? Et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, so we, we've talked about, yeah, Facebook, Instagram and YouTube.
Oh, TikTok for you?
Mayor, this is already outside my comfort zone, so I gotta.
About Nextdoor?
Yeah, we, we, we had talked about that. We'll have to see. I'm not sure exactly how you would share that, but I think you can share it with Nextdoor also. But in the intent, Councilmember Sparks is to share it all across all the different mediums that we have.
There's going to be so many, you can hardly keep up with them. Thank you, Mr. Obed, for that report. Now we'll move on to City Councilmember Reports.
Oh, yeah, Mayor, actually, one last thing. And I think I neglected to say this, but the video updates, I was intending to do them essentially every two weeks coinciding with council meetings. That was the frequency.
That's terrific. Would, would that be supported with written updates to Community Voice?
Well, the thought was it would be sort of more direct messaging to people. Because the Community Voice tends to require kind of unique content or kind of different process. So that wasn't the initial plan is to give them. But to do it here at the, at the council meetings and then also do a video update that gets pushed out. That's the same thing.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Harvey?
I just have a quick update. We had a special Water Advisory Committee meeting yesterday where. We approved the Water Shortage Allocation Methodology. The Technical Advisory Committee, along with the consultants, have kind of been working on this for a few years. So it was. Discussed and worked on very hard and it was approved unanimously. And Damian didn't report on this, but the. The water storage at Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino is really getting pretty dire at this point. Lake Mendocino is down to 17,000. And Lake Sonoma is down to 113,000. And the goal for Lake Sonoma, they are hoping to keep it above 100. And Mendo up above 15 by 10-1, but at the rate things are going. We might dip below those before that date. So not great shape, but that's where we're at right now.
What percentages would those be?
Craig probably speak to this better than myself, but I believe that. Lake Sonoma is hovering around in the 40%. And Lake Mendocino is way down. I mean, it, it's getting pretty close to. Being dried up, if you will. 17,000 is very, very, very low. So, yeah, I, I don't know what the number is on that, but maybe Damian or Craig has a better numbers on those. But that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon?
I'm going to thank my colleague Susan for starting me off in a, in a mood of stark terror and worry. On top of all the other things we've dealt with the last years, looking at this, we'll see. So I have two things to report tonight. First, I did attend a 9/11 ceremony on 9/11. With the City Manager and Rancho Doby Fire Personnel. It was a very nice event. For people to gather safely and take a moment to share that remembrance, which I think is a good thing for us to continue to do. I also wanted to report that yesterday, as part of the SETA, RCPA meeting at the Regional Climate Protection Authority. We unanimously approved two actions, which are, might be of interest to the council. First is we adopted a resolution supporting the prohibition. Of new gas stations in Sonoma County, as well as any expansion thereof of gas station infrastructure. So that would mean pumps, et cetera. And secondly, we charged RCPA staff with facilitating meetings with interested municipal and county planning staff. To do the work of clarifying policy, basic policy on this, setting up next steps to deal with issues such as legal, SEQA, et cetera. In the interest of doing our best practice on this, making sure we're moving forward as one. And avoiding some of the issues we saw in some areas of the county with the. All-electric reach code to the best we can. So that's the thought behind that. So I'll just end my conference by saying some thanks should go out to the start of all this, was from some community activism from both. No Gas Here of Petaluma, as well as Congress of Cattati. The Petaluma Council and certainly Councilmember Fisher for taking us on first. And I would be remiss not to point out it was Councilmember Ben Ford who agendized this very early in Cattati. So. All these things came about, it's interesting for Cattati. If you remember last year, or maybe two years ago now. There was a small, somewhat controversial, just outside of city limits, gas station project. And you can almost draw a direct line from that to the point in time now where the county is actually looking this with. We have the two biggest cities and two of the smallest cities already deeply engaged in looking into this. And I'm sure there's more to follow. That's a remarkable change pretty quickly. So hopefully that's a heartening thing to know that sometimes when these things are ready, they just move quickly like that. So. I'll look forward to our discussion when this comes before us and we'll know that we're not the only ones talking about this, hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. I don't see any other hands up at this point from the council, and I do not have anything to report out. and I do not have anything to report out, so now. Yes?
Sorry, I tried to break in there. But just getting back to you on your question about storage levels, reservoir storage levels. So the Water Agency goes as of September 9th, so it's, you know, five days old. But as of September 9th, Lake Sonoma is at 46.5%. So under half percent, right? And then Lake Mendocino is at 26% storage.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. As depressing as that is, thank you for the information. So now we'll move on to public comment on non-action agenda items.
There, I just got unmute, I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me? Oh, good. This is Marjorie Crump Shears from COR. And I just want to say thank you to Councilmembers Sparks and Harvey for chairing Saturday's meeting. Many of us will be there, and I want to wish you break a leg. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And anything after the agenda was posted? No information on that? Thank you very much. And with that, it is 7:43. I hope to see many of you at the accordion festival. Safety, of course, first. And otherwise, have a great evening and thank you all very much for your good meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.